Okay, I guess I'll on. Are you ready for this? Should I take some?
Good afternoon. I'd like to open the Salina City Commission for April the 20th. If the clerk will please call roll.
Mayor Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Angel.
Here.
Commissioner Arbke.
Here.
Commissioner Jennings.
Here.
Commissioner Peck.
Here.
And welcome everyone to the rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands in its name, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. Okay, at this time we'll open it up for the Citizens Forum. If there's anyone out there that would like to address the City Commission on items that are not on today's agenda. Please give us your name and address, please.
Gary, Schwartz Avenue 528, South College. I would just like to ask if the beginning discussion you had in study group, will that become an agenda item at one of the next meetings for you to consider or not, a repeal of the newly proposed smoking ban? If it's possible to answer that, I would like to address that. If it's necessary, if it's not necessary, I would just soon not address it. I don't know who makes the determination. It's my understanding that probably a commissioner has to make a request to have an issue on the ballot or on the agenda and/or the ballot.
What is that procedure?
Well, the action would be to repeal an ordinance. And is that a first and second reading, Greg? Or is it just one action for the repeal?
No, the repeal would require first and second.
Same publication. Same process.
Right. I think the question may relate to the agenda process as far as...
Yeah, I believe the rules and procedures that govern your meetings require a majority of members to place an issue like that on the agenda for an upcoming meeting. So in essence, if the commission, if a majority of you said, "Yeah, we want that in any form, discussion, as a discussion topic, as an action item," whatever it might be, on a future agenda, it would take a majority vote to place that, whatever that topic might be, on your agenda.
The only thing I understand that we're up against a little bit of a timeline. Is that correct?
Yeah, we have, well, we have a May 2nd implementation date. Implementation is probably not the right word. Effective date where the ordinance actually commences and the obligations of the ordinance start on that date. So that's coming up pretty fast.
Which would be May 2nd. May I ask if there's a consensus among you or you think you're in a position to discuss that and make a decision today whether or not you would want it on the agenda to consider? If you're not going to do that, I would like to make a brief pitch for doing that.
Quick question. Jason, about, I hate to put you on the spot, but in terms of educational information, website information, and man-hours that staff has put into this, can we quantify that with any sort of dollar figure about how much maybe we've, the city has put into getting this ordinance put into effect?
It's pretty hard. There's been quite a bit of legal time as we looked at other communities and tried to bring in aspects of theirs. Certain communities, Lawrence is an example, who went through the scrutiny of the State Supreme Court and a lot of other communities with similar ordinances, a lot of public meetings and forums. And quite honestly, if you want to take an action at any point to consider repealing, you really ought to consider whether you should open up a public forum for that purpose of that discussion, just as a due process action. But I don't know if I could quantify it. I know there were quite a few hours, I mean, from different staff levels that, you know, were put into the effort.
I have a question on that as well. How long was the process in this last go-around? From the time that it actually showed up as a topic, to conduct all the forums, to hear all the research and presentation, to where we met the first action in that? What was the timeline on that?
Trying to think, Greg. The first time that you really started looking at the ordinance structure, was that February? Is that right?
I think that's, I think that's basically correct.
So really, probably from about somewhere in February through, oh, March, I mean, about a six, eight-week timeframe where most of the work came into play.
And that was when the discussions started amongst the commission? Or did they start on the agenda before that?
In essence, before that. It was an item that was discussed at their open strategic planning meeting. That would have been, I don't know, a few months before that. It wasn't a long time before that. And it was brought up and I think a majority felt that it was a good idea to put that on as a goal. And so then when we amended that, we also then started looking at that particular issue with that April election in sight.
Commissioners? Any other thoughts?
Either way, to me, this is gonna, it breaks down to me, it's gonna cost us $20,000 or so, either way we do this. I'd just as soon leave the ordinance in effect and let those who oppose it bring their petitions forward and we go from there.
Unless any commissioner feels that you want to put this on a consent agenda. But then again, like I said, we've got a, do we discuss it here or do we just let it go as Commissioner Peck?
Yeah, you wouldn't end up putting it on a consent agenda, but just on a future agenda.
Excuse me, an agenda.
Yeah. That would take a majority vote if you wanted to do that. And it could be for discussion only, just to discuss it. Could be for any aspect of it. You're not limited to say repeal or keep or anything like that. The agenda item can be pretty well any aspect of it you would want to have if you chose to do that.
I'm certainly not opposed to discussion.
Any comments from the commissioners? Otherwise, I will just probably let it stand.
Then may I make my pitch briefly?
Go right on ahead.
Since you have the longer version, I'll do the shorter version. Let me make a case for City Commissioners repeal of the new tobacco-smoking ban. Number one, allows citizen proponents for the new ban asking government to intrude on all small businesses, public and private, to be proactive. They, the proponents, can pursue their already planned petition and campaign for a public vote. Repeal gives them opportunity to demonstrate commitment to their cause. When proponents petition to the ballot, the legal wording of the question eliminates voter confusion. You vote yes ban, no ban. If opponents file their petition to the ballot, the legal wording of the question causes confusion necessarily. Vote yes to repeal to be against the ban, vote no to repeal to be for the ban. Voter confusion was prevalent six years ago. Let me illustrate with a shortened version of the one you have, with the voter talking to himself at the ballot. Now, I've just read it. It's pretty long, but I think I get it. Let's see. Common sense says if I'm against something, I'd say no, and if I'm for something, I'd say yes. So it's gotta be yes if I'm for the ban and no if I'm against the ban. So I'll vote no. The voter just accurately vote no against the ban. Does anyone know? That's the short version. I'll almost guarantee if you went through my long version, you have no idea if the voter voted accurately or not. How many with a show of hands think the voter in this shortened version voted accurately no against the ban? You don't know, I'll guarantee it. Simply illustrates my point. So I'm asking City Commissioners for a majority vote to, in this case at least, go to discussion to consider repealing that smoking ban so the proponents can petition to the ballot, creating a clear choice for voters, which is very simply vote yes ban, vote no ban. I've talked to some of you about this. I'm not just poking fun, I'm serious. I have my personal opinion in terms of how the vote will go. Occasionally, I have a penchant for standing up for the underdog. As some of you know, among the things this would offer, complete, as complete as possible, completely eliminating potential confusion at the ballot box. Also eliminates, in my opinion, any penchant to be complaining, whatever other words. I totally agree, it ought to go to the ballot. But I think to best serve democracy, as I think I mentioned in the long version, you want to have the most clarity at the ballot box. The opponents have done their due diligence. They have petition ready to file. Like I said earlier, you can blame me if you want someone to blame. When they had 1,679 petition signers and I said, "Where did you put them?" etc., so on and so forth. And I said, "If you don't have more than 500 in addition to what you need, don't submit it." So if anybody wants somebody to blame for that, I simply recommended that because I didn't think they had the awareness that some people in certain situations, what I would call the most likely to be confused and/or unsophisticated voters, sometimes don't want to admit, potential voters, that they're not even registered to vote. So that's my pitch. It's real clear and simple, not trying to avoid. The opponents now have enough signatures gathered. They have like 2,200 signatures. But I'm dead serious about the clarity at the ballot box. I also know that the majority of you now have the propensity to consider that harder than the former commission did in terms of... So, thank you.
Thank you. So, do we decide if we want to have that on the consent agenda at this time? Do you need a motion for that or is that just something we...
Yeah, I think if you would like to have the topic on a future agenda, a motion would be good.
When we say "the topic," what do we mean by actually repea...
Repealing? Is it to repeal the...
Well, it could be. If you just want to have topic, it could be discuss the recently approved, you know, clean air ordinance, or it could be repeal. It could be whatever you want it to be. It's really kind of probably subject to whoever the motion maker would be, but you're not limited. I want to make sure you understand that. But whatever that is, once you're certain, whoever, that would make the motion is certain of what they'd like the topic to be, have a motion, a second, and a majority vote would ask staff to put it on an agenda for whatever the specified date is that he'd like to do that.
And then for a lack of a second, it would just die and we would just go on?
Lack of a second or lack of a majority vote.
So I'll bring it back to the commission.
Well, I would like to make a motion that we have a discussion on this to potentially eliminate a special election and discuss the potential repeal of the new clean air ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to, you wanted to have a discussion on possibly repealing the current...
Yes, because I don't want to have a special election. So if we could have these two parties get together and talk about some common ground to save the city $20,000 to $25,000, I think that would be a very worthy thing for the citizens of Salina to do.
You want it added to the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
I should have said same sign. Did you get that? Okay.
I didn't hear how that vote went.
Aye. All those in favor of having it on the agenda were aye.
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 Yeah, what was the vote count?
Three to two. There we go. Three to two.
Commissioners, next question. I don't know what you need to necessarily vote on this one, but what date are you looking for that discussion? I know...
That was my concern because of the May 2nd, and I believe Commissioner Arbke will not be here next Monday.
That's correct.
October.
That'd be right before the general, so...
So, any commissioner have a preference?
The sooner the better, I think.
Do we want to keep it on Monday even though you will not be here?
That'd be fine. I'll write something up.
Okay. So if we could get it on next Monday's agenda.
Okay. Is there anything that you need staff to prepare for your discussion that you are clear about right now?
Could we get maybe some copies of other sample ordinances or even the proposed state law that sets out what exceptions they considered so that we can look at the potential exceptions?
Well, I need to check. There may be quite a few variations to that state law. And in cities, we have a lot of examples from cities. You, 30?
Well, just off the top of your head, do you know what Emporia just recently passed? Was theirs a 100%? Was it Emporia? Yeah.
Yes.
On this last election? Was it a 100% ban or did it include, did it have some other provisions?
I don't know. You're gonna find most of the cities have some different provisions. There's not one ordinance that's typically exactly like the others. You see variants as far as exceptions. Some allow tobacco shops, some allow bars, some allow private clubs, some allow other things, percentage of hotel rooms. There's not probably one that's exactly the same across the board. So that's where, you know, when we provided this to the City Commission initially, we had a kind of a worksheet. That may be the easiest thing to work off of, where we listed all the cities and tried to basically itemize those exceptions. And that's as far as that really, for the most part, got.
Was it that matrix form?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that would probably help the new commissioners.
Yeah, I would say if there's any simplified information that was provided the first time, base reason for voting no is really my desire to start at ground zero, which is really gonna be hard on too, that we're here before. But to have that information to proceed forward, if there's a summary in different form, that would be great. But I know there's, I'm sure there's tons of information from the first time around.
Commissioners, one thing you might want to think about too is that if you have it on there and that item's open-ended, the question of actually voting to repeal, if there's a serious consideration of that at the next meeting, you probably want to stipulate that because you have a lot of folks in the community, one side or another, that'll really want to be here either to say go for it or to say, "Well, hold the wagons a second." And quite honestly, that might prompt the need to have further discussions on the merits of that and the considerations because we have obviously some probably different perspectives now than maybe we, you know, maybe we did before. And I think you're gonna have some people who might want to share their perspective. And I recognize many of you have probably seen it or been here, but there's, it's not a requirement in this case, but I think probably you might think about the due process aspect of allowing that. What that would mean though is that you wouldn't be taking any action prior to May 2nd, but we could figure the May 2nd out one way or another. I just, what I want to be careful is we don't go back and forth and back and forth and the public's thoroughly confused. And that's gonna be difficult.
Well, and with only four of us here, how does that work? Does Commissioner Arbke leave his vote in a sealed envelope or by proxy? Or does he call us?
We can do it on Skype.
We don't recognize proxy votes. So I'd like to think that, maybe what I should say is that if you have no intention, if you just have an intention of discussing only and take no action, we might want to stipulate that for the next meeting so that no one has a huge concern that if they don't, if they're not here, then they miss the opportunity to voice their concern.
Is that agreeable with the commissioners, especially with the newly elected? If it just is a discussion?
Would we amend the motion or just a general agreement that...
Was to discuss.
And the possible, he said, repealing.
Yeah, I think as long as there's general agreement, that's fine.
Does that work?
Okay.
Okay. Do I need to clarify anything else or did you get that? Okay, good. Okay, moving right on with awards and proclamations.
Item 4.1, the month of April 19th, or I'm sorry, the week of April 19th through the 25th as National Volunteer Week in the city of Salina. Glenn Steyer, Chairman of the Volunteer Connection Advisory Council will read the proclamation.
Proclamation of the city of Salina. Whereas experience teaches us that government by itself cannot meet all of the city's social and environmental needs, and whereas volunteers, both individually and in groups, of all ages and sizes, can take action that creates positive change in our community, and whereas the giving of oneself in service empowers both the giver and the recipient, and whereas hundreds of volunteers connect with service opportunities in dozens of areas of the community service organizations, governmental offices, educational, and health care institutions each year through the Volunteer Connection. And whereas volunteers are vital to our future and caring and productive community, and whereas this week has been set aside nationally to recognize volunteers for their commitment to service and to celebrate their contributions, and whereas our city volunteer force of untold thousands is a great treasure. Now therefore, I, Lucy Larson, mayor hereby proclaim April 19th through the 25th, 2009 as National Volunteer Week in Salina, Kansas, and urge our fellow citizens to honor all those who contribute their time and talent for better our community, to celebrate the many accomplishments that have resulted from their action, and to join in the reaping of the awards of service to others through volunteers.
I have a signed, I have a signed proclamation here.
Pardon?
I have a signed proclamation here for you. Was there anything extra? Any events or anything that a large group of people are volunteering for?
We have a supplement in today's Salina Journal, which some of you may have seen, and then the Salina United Way and the Volunteer Connection will be delivered in special recognition items to agendas to their board volunteering. And also, we will be involved with the challenge proclamation that Jason recently...
Okay. There you go. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 4.2, the week of May 3rd through the 9th, 2009 as Building Safety Week in the city of Salina. Mike Roberts, building official, will read the proclamation.
Mayor Commissioners, Building Safety Week 2009, May 3rd through the 9th proclamation. Whereas through our continuing efforts to address critical safety issues in the built environment that affect our citizens regardless of age or occupation, both in everyday life and in times of natural disaster, we are confident that our structures are safe and sound, and whereas vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, and others in the construction industry work year-round to ensure the safe construction and maintenance of buildings, and whereas that dedicated members of the International Code Council develop and implement the highest quality codes to protect Americans in the buildings where we live, work, play, and learn, and whereas the international codes, the most widely adopted building safety and fire prevention codes in the nation are used by most US cities, counties, and states, these modern building safety codes also include safeguards to protect the public from natural disasters such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildland fires, and earthquakes. And whereas Building Safety Week, sponsored by the International Code Council, reminds the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown guardians of public safety, our local code officials who help prevent countless fires and accidents, and whereas the theme Building Safety Where You Live, Work, and Play encourages all Americans to raise awareness of the importance of building safety, sustainable building, pool, spa, and hot tub safety, and new technologies in the construction industry, it presents appropriate steps everyone can take to ensure that the places where we live, work, play, and learn are safe and that countless lives have been saved due to the implementation of safety codes by local and state agencies. And whereas this year, as we observe Building Safety Week, we ask the citizens of our community to consider projects that will improve building and fire safety at home and in the community to reflect on the value of building and fire codes that we often take for granted and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by the local building safety and fire prevention officials in protecting lives and property. Now therefore, I, M. Lucy Larson, mayor of the city of Salina, hereby proclaim May 3rd through May 9th, 2009 as Building Safety Week in Salina. Accordingly, our citizens are encouraged to join communities across the state of Kansas and America to participate in Building Safety Week recognition. Signed and sealed this 20th day of April in the year 2009, M. Lucy Larson, mayor, city of Salina.
Are there any activities or events planned for that week?
Yes, well, I'm pleased to announce we have several opportunities to celebrate Building Safety Week and to get that out in front of our citizens. Education, we think, is very important, and so we have posters that USD 305 has agreed to put up in all of our elementary and secondary schools proclaiming Building Safety Week and along with some building safety pamphlets that they can, they will have available. We will have some public service announcements running on Access TV to remind folks about Building Safety Week. We are also very pleased that, again, this year, we are going to be sponsoring a couple of open houses in our offices on Tuesday the 5th and Thursday the 7th to invite our citizens to come in for a meet and greet, to meet our staff, to look at the various handouts and informational material we have, and to also see the place where our staff works. See, we also will make available to them our aerial maps and views so they can pick out their, pick out their homes, pick out their trampolines, pick out their cars. And we also will be having refreshments and door prizes during those evenings. And hopefully, Commissioners will take note and you'll take the opportunity to be at one of our open houses on the 5th or the 6th. And then also this year, because education is so important, on the evening of the 6th, Building Services is going to be sponsoring a continuing education class for local contractors at the Bicentennial Center. The topic of the class this time will be getting to know the ADA. And so we are pleased to make that available to our contractors for use in their renewal requirements for their licenses. So got a pretty big agenda lined up for this year.
A busy week. Okay. Thank you. I have a signed proclamation for you.
Item 4.3, the day of April 25th, 2009 as Take Charge Challenge Day in the city of Salina. Jason Gage, city manager, will read the proclamation.
Mayor and Commissioners, the Take Charge Challenge event's part of a year-long campaign sponsored basically by the Land Institute and the city is one of the major sponsors. So I'm happy to read this for you. Proclamation of the city of Salina. Whereas the city of Salina supports the Climate Protection Agreement and the Cities for Climate Protection Campaign, and whereas the city of Salina has expressed a commitment to sustainability, and whereas the city of Salina is ready to accept the Take Charge Energy Challenge for Salina to become the most conservative city in Kansas by reducing our community's use of electricity over 12 months. Whereas the city of Salina accepts the Take Charge Energy Challenge and takes the opportunity actions of, one, partnering with Westar Energy in the climate and energy project to assist the businesses and residents of Salina to reduce their electricity use; two, save money for our citizens by helping them reduce their energy costs through education and awareness; three, come together as a community with a common goal to reduce electricity usage; and four, take charge of our energy future and increase our sustainability. Whereas the Take Charge Energy Challenge kickoff event will be held April 25th, 2009 from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the Salina Central High School gym located at 650 East Crawford Street. So now therefore, I, Lucy Larson, mayor of the city of Salina, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the day of April 25th, 2009 as Take Charge Challenge Day in the city of Salina and urge all citizens to participate in the challenge to reduce electricity usage and costs. And witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Salina, Kansas, to be affixed this 20th day of April, 2009.
And I think there's some events or a big kickoff event planned for that day?
Yes, the event mentioned is this Saturday at 11 o'clock at Salina Central High School. This is a big deal. It's a huge outreach campaign. It involves some of the smaller communities, but they look at the per capita usage. So makes it, makes us have to really work hard as an organization and as a community to win this thing. While it is an outreach campaign, it also has a tangible result. The winner of this will receive a wind for school's turbine or solar panels for a civic building or cash to complete a civic energy efficiency project. So there's a real award for this thing. That's one reason we'd really like to do this. Not just to say we can, but there's a nice carrot at the end of it. There's a couple webpages. The folks can visit www.climanandenergy.org for general information about this or for more specific information about what they can do to help Salina win, www.takechargekansas.org. And so the event's gonna have food fun and lots of energy tips and exhibits, so we think it'll be a pretty all-around fun, community event.
We won't have to have meetings with, by candlelight, will we?
It's my hope that we won't.
Okay, we'll go on. There are no public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time, so we'll go on with the consent agenda.
I... Item 6.1, approve the minutes of April 13th, 2009.
I need a motion to?
Mayor, I would move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. There's no development business, so on to administration.
Item 8.1, second reading ordinance number 0910497, granting final approval of a property tax exemption for Berg Camp Incorporated.
This ordinance was passed on first reading on April the 13th, and since that time, there's been no comment, no comments have been received. In fairness to the newly elected commissioners, I didn't know if any of you had a question regarding this ordinance. Is there any public comment? If not, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
I move that we adopt the second reading ordinance 0910497 for final approval, property tax exemption for Berg Camp Inc.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded to adopt ordinance number 0910497 on second reading. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Angel?
Aye.
Commissioner Arpke?
Aye.
Commissioner Jennings?
Aye.
Commissioner Peck?
Aye.
Mayor Larson?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0.
Item 8.2, first reading ordinance number 0910496, amending Chapter 8, Article 1, Division 1, Section 8-12.4 of the Salina Code by amending Section 406.7.1 of the International Building Code pertaining to fire rating requirements for fire bearers in open-sided RV storage buildings.
Mr. Roberts?
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Back in 2000, our local building code was adopted to create a specialized category of buildings for RV storage in response to a stakeholder concern. The amendment provided a definition of what these structures were as well as assigning, in the adoption of that amendment, it assigned an occupancy classification to these buildings. This may get a little technical, but as an S1 occupancy that in so doing, prescriptively limited the size, building size based on the number of variables, including the type of construction, the area of open space around the building, and the need for automatic fire suppression systems. One of the requirements of this occupancy classification is that open-sided buildings that contain RV storage areas that exceed 12,000 square feet are required to have automatic fire suppression systems. The building code then goes on to provide that different types of fire-resistant construction walls may be used to bound or limit these fire areas to 12,000 square feet or less so the fire suppression system wouldn't be required. At the building advisory board two years ago, when this local amendment was discussed, we acknowledged the 12,000 square foot limitation to avoid the sprinkling, but our discussion at that time did not include what type of fire-rated wall would be required to actually limit the fire areas to the 12,000 square feet. The IBC prescriptively requires that fire ratings of walls to limit these fire areas in this occupancy must be at least three hours. One type of assembly to accomplish this is a, would be, for example, metal studs from the floor to the underside of the roof decking with three layers of 5/8X type rock on, or its equivalent, on both sides of the wall. A local developer who in fact is the same stakeholder that originally requested this amendment two years ago intends to expand an existing facility currently be used, currently being used for this purpose, for RV storage, and they submitted to the building advisory board a request for consideration of an amendment to reduce the fire rating requirement to one hour in lieu of three hours. The board considered their request last month at their March meeting, and one of the factors that the board considered in their deliberations is the considerable fire risk inherent in RVs because of the amounts of combustibles used in their construction, the amount of fuel capacity they have onboard, and the potential for onboard propane storage bottles. There was a lot of good discussion at the board meeting from both stakeholders, from the fire department and from, among the board themselves. And so at the conclusion of that, the board also determined, among other things, that open buildings are inherently safer than enclosed buildings, that they are more readily accessible for firefighting, and that storage buildings for other types of vehicular storage are permitted to have only a two-hour separation. The board declined to approve the request to submit it to reduce the requirement to one hour, but did determine that an amendment to reduce the rating to two hours for this specific type of building was reasonable. The following action is reflected in, our report was taken. We've attached copies of both the amendment request from the proponent, our staff report in response to that, and minutes from the building advisory board if you need any more background. We would, we believe that this amendment would be in conformance with our strategic plan, that it will provide the highest quality of services consistent with governing body direction, available resources, and staff commitment to quality. The actions that, the options we've identified for the city commission today are to take no action at this time, or to adopt ordinance number 0910496 after making any specific changes that would be determined by the commission today. Adopt ordinance number 0910496 as recommended by staff and the building advisory board, or refer the matter back to the building advisory board for further consideration. With that said, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have today.
Questions of Mr. Roberts?
Actually, I have one. What is the difference between S1 and S2 because actually what we're doing is taking that occupancy and moving it to another class?
S2s, according to the building code, are defined as low hazard occupancies. S1s are moderate hazard occupancies. And the feeling of the board was that these RVs were more of a, presented more of a characteristic of a moderate hazard than a low hazard because, as we mentioned, because of the amount of combustibles used in their construction and fuel and so forth.
Any other comments, questions? Public comment?
My name is Warren Edgar. I'm an architect, and I was working with the stakeholder that has an interest in the outcome of this. We had worked through the original modification to the building code and didn't discover this three-hour requirement versus a two-hour or one-hour requirement until we had a project ready to bring forward. In our discussion with the building codes advisory board, I think everybody acknowledged that this was an unintended consequence, that there was a general consensus that we should at least stay at the two-hour rating, which was what it would have been in its original classification. And so this is kind of, we looked at it as kind of a cleanup operation to make the adjustment that was made originally compatible with its original intent.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, I'll bring it back for action.
Mayor, I'd move we adopt ordinance number 09-10496, amending Section 8-12.4 of the Salina Code by amending Section 406 of the O3 IBC to provide an exception to Section 406.71 that modifies the fire rating requirements for fire barriers and open-sided RV storage buildings.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded to adopt reading ordinance number 0910496, amending Chapter 8, Article 1, Division 1, Section 8-12.4 of the Salina Code, and by amending Section 406.7.1. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes 5-0.
8.3, city commission board appointments.
Okay, with some of the newly elected commissioners, they have been appointed to boards. Do I read those? Do you need a motion also for these? No? As mayor, I will be on the Economic Development Executive Committee, Salina Area Chamber of Commerce, Salina Economic Development Incentives Council, and the Salina Public Library. Vice Mayor Peck, Salina Celine County Building Authority, Salina Housing Authority, and the Joint City County Board of Health. Commissioner Angel, Salina Airport Authority, Salina Celine County Building Authority. Commissioner Arpke, North Central Regional Planning Commission, and the Joint City County Board of Health. And Commissioner Jennings, Arts and Humanities and Convention and Tourism.
Mayor, I would move that we recess into executive session for 45 minutes to discuss with legal counsel matters subject to the attorney-client privilege for the reason the public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interests and matters and reconvene in this room at 5:25 PM.
Second. All those in favor for executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're in executive session. Do you expect any action?
We do not.
We're in executive session.